On the board and reciting the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to welcome everyone to the May 2016 meeting of the around the quote zoning board of appeals. Somehow it doesn't seem like it should be May already. Before we get underway, there's a few things I need to point out to you. First off, the fire exit is located to your left. In the event of a fire, you'll be notified by an announcement. If notified, please move in a calm and orderly fashion. Do not use the elevator, use either the north or the south stairs to leave the building. Our meetings are being recorded by our secretary, Michelle, for the purpose of a record in minutes, not a verbatim transcript. In order to help her identify who's speaking, when you come to the podium, please state your name and your address each time that you come to the podium so she can keep track of who to credit things for in the minutes. We will follow the items as they appear on our agenda. There are extra copies of the agenda on the table next to the door. Once the case has been called, the applicant or their representative will come to the podium, identify themselves, and state their address. Then they'll pause a moment, raise their right hands, I'll swear them in, and then they'll have the opportunity to present their case. During the presentation of their case, members of the board may ask questions or engage in discussions with the applicant. That's an opportunity for the board to satisfy ourselves that we understand the application and what's being represented. During that period, that's open for the board only. Once that applicant concludes the presentation of their case, we'll then open it up to public input. There's three categories so far of public input that have been identified. The first is those who wish to speak in favor of the application. We'll ask you to line up, come up one at a time, speak into the microphone clearly, identify yourself for our secretary. You don't get sworn, you just tell us what you'd like to point out in favor of the application. When we've heard everyone who wishes to speak in favor of the application, we'll then turn the hearing over to those who wish to speak in opposition to the application. Same procedure will be followed. Line up along the side of the room, come to the podium one at a time, identify yourself. And then, when everyone who's been heard in opposition to the application is concluded, we'll go to the third category. And that's a category that you're not really in favor of it, you're not opposed to it, you're not sure what your position is, but you'd like to talk to us about it. So, that's your opportunity to talk to us. That's the third category. We haven't identified a fourth category yet, but we're open to suggestions. Comments during the public portion of the meeting are directed to the board, not to the applicant, and not to anyone else who's spoken either for, against, or to the application. Once all of that public input portion has been completed, then we'll let the applicant or their representative return to the podium and address any points that rose during the public input portion. And once that's completed, then the case is closed and we'll move on to the next case. After all the cases on the agenda have been completed, we will then take a break, the length of which will be announced at the beginning of it. And after that break, we will come back and deliberate on each of the cases that we've heard in the order that they appear on our agenda and for which the applicant or their representative are still present. So if the first applicant has left, we'll take up the second case first, if the second applicant is here. And we'll go through for all the applicants who are still present and decide their cases. And then we'll go back to the top of the agenda and go down the cases in the order they appear on the agenda for those who have already left. If you've left, but you're interested in knowing what the outcome was of a particular decision, and you can either catch us before we go off the air when you get home on Channel 12, or you can call the planning and zoning office department tomorrow morning after nine, and they'll be glad to tell you what we decided. So, and during our deliberation, there is no more input, unless we specifically ask for it, which we occasionally do, but generally, that's for us to debate among ourselves and decide the case. So, having said all that, we will get underway with our agenda, but there are two notes that I need to bring to your attention first, in case anyone is here, with respect to the first case on the agenda involving 951 and 1027, Thomas Avenue and 45 Pattonwood Drive, commonly known as the Lighthouse Point property. That has been postponed to the June meeting. And with respect to the application that was tabled a while ago with respect to 160 Denzmore Road, that application also will not be heard and considered tonight. Both of those cases are still involved in the secret process, and so they're not ready to come before us. So, having said that, then I guess we start with the second case that's listed on our agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First item on the agenda tonight is case number ZB 1605-1, upon the matter of request by Michael Barber for an area variance to install a six-foot-high side yard fence exceeding maximum allowable height on premises 128 Paxton Road in an R1 residential district.
Michael Barber, 128 Paxton Road.
Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay.
So today I'm here for the variance for the west side of my property, the rear foundation to the front foundation, six-foot vinyl fence. I currently had a four-foot fence which has been removed from years of damage, and removed it, and would like to redo my whole property with the six-foot vinyl. Would be for, one would be for the side street that connects Pretty Kitty Corner to me. When everyone turns off, shoots into my front windows. And my neighbor's next to me, we're fairly close to each other. When he's parked and I'm sitting in my front living room, I can see everything clear as day.
Are you also going to close in that part between the house and the garage?
The house and the garage, I'm not closing that in.
Okay. Because sometimes when people do that, so the dogs are...
I have no animals.
Okay.
I have no reason to do that one.
No chickens either, right?
Not yet.
Okay.
When I was talking to you earlier, those two ends by the garage in the front, you're talking about you're going to put a gate?
Correct. I actually have, if you guys want to look at this. Page three shows the Oxford style, which is a lattice up front, which gives it a little, makes it look like it's lower than six feet. And then on the right side is the classic, which is what will be everything else.
So the gate is going to be different?
The gate will have a little lattice, a little decorative up front, just to give it the illusion that it looks lower than it really is.
Just out of curiosity, I was there the other day. You know, I'm not a big fan of having a wall like that at the...
Understandable.
Along the side of the house. It's a nice looking house, by the way, I love the driveway.
Thank you very much. I can't take credit for that, though.
Well, it's a good looking house. You own it.
So far.
Would you be opposed to doing the lattice like some of these fences are in that whole side section if we were to grant the six foot, like a...
Are we talking all the way down the west end side?
Just...
Or just the section that, for the variance, I guess?
Just the section for the variance. So it would be...
I guess I wouldn't be opposed to it.
Along the, coming from the front corner of the house, out to the corner, toward the driveway, and then back, the length of the, or the depth of the house.
I wouldn't be opposed to it.
Only because it'll, again, I'm not a big fan of the six foot at all. But, and typically I would say no, but if it's not affecting that neighbor to your left, and they don't mind...
Actually, he likes the idea, because it actually, he thinks it'll increase the value on his house, because it'll finish his fence completely in vinyl.
Again, aesthetically, I think it would look pleasing like one of those or one of those.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Would that detract from your goal of eliminating the lights coming in your windows on that side? And the neighbor, when he's sitting in the garage?
Um, I don't know if it would be, because I think the lattice section is only 12 inches, so it'd still be a five-foot fence with that lattice finishing off the six foot. So I don't think it would be horrible. I mean, I don't hate my neighbor, I just want privacy when I want privacy.
I thought originally that Mike was talking about just the part that would face Paxton, but he's also talking about the part down the side. So that's, I wasn't clear whether or not that would interfere with what you were trying to achieve on that part.
No, it would still give me the, what I feel is efficient enough to have enough privacy.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
I just think that this fits into the category of a reasonable alternative. That's part of our deliberation leader. It sounds like it's unacceptable.
Sounds that way. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here who would like to speak in opposition to the application? Anyone who'd like to talk to us about fences and different kinds of fences or anything like that? All right, we'll close the hearing with respect to this case. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is case number ZB 1605-2, upon the matter of request by Tammy Echols for area variances to replace existing four-foot-high chain link front yard fencing with six-foot-high solid fencing and four-foot-high black chain link fencing exceeding maximum permitted height, type, and linear footage, and with less than required front setback on premises 405 Crossfield Road in an R3 residential district. Tammy Echols.
Robert Echols.
405 Crossfield Road?
Yes, sir.
Sorry.
Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
We do.
Okay.
As you saw in our application, gentlemen, women, ladies, we actually requested the six-foot wooden fence up until the backyard of each neighbor's. Our neighbor on the left side of our house already has a six-foot fence up to the back of his...
You're talking about the property to the north of yours? Or the south?
That would be the north of mine.
If you're, all right, if you're looking at your house to the right, it has the fence, right?
Looking at my house, it's the north of mine.
To the left.
To the north.
You're looking at the house?
Okay.
Oh.
Yeah, if you're looking at the house, it's the south.
Yeah.
You're right, I'm sorry.
All right. Oh, that's your neighbor's fence, not yours?
No, it's my neighbor's, no.
There's two fences right now.
There's two fences. The new fence, we actually...
The new fence is yours.
So, if you're coming out of my house, it's, the north, the south side fence is mine, the north side fence is my neighbor's. Coming out of my house, walking out of...
So if you have this picture that we provided, the two fences, the chain link, and then the wooden one is the one that he's referring to, saying our neighbor already has a wooden six-foot to the back of his house, next to our current chain link fence.
Want me to pass that around?
They have it.
I'm not sure that we have that picture.
We don't have that photo.
Yeah.
No, that's a different photo.
That's the same photo, yours is bigger than mine. You have it.
No, I don't have this one.
We have, we have this one, and that one.
Yeah, that's it, right here, sir.
That's it.
It's just drawn in tighter.
Oh, it's, it's just a narrower focus, okay.
This one's bad.
Yeah, but I can see the whole idea of it better that way.
All right, so you're, so you're referring to the fence that's to the right as we're looking at that picture?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's the one to the north.
What makes this unique is the fact that the house is set so much further back.
Yes.
But your driveway is on Crossfield, right? Not on, you back up to another house, right?
That's my house that's back there. Our house sits back.
Right, and when you go out your back door, you come, if you just head further west, you come to another house, not a street, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. So you have like no backyard, and mega front yard.
Exactly.
Okay.
Right. So we want to match on both sides, the wooden fence to the back of both of those houses, matching our neighbors, and then chain link from there around like we already had, just a new fence.
And so if I understand correctly, if your house was located in the same position on the lot as both of your neighbor's houses, you want to come up to where your back foundation line would be, which would be allowed. And then from that point forward, you want a four-foot chain link fence instead of the three and a half feet that the town code would allow.
Right.
Right.
And that's because, and I don't mean to put words in your mouth, but it's a lot easier and cheaper to buy a four-foot fence than three and a half foot, right?
They'd come in four, and they would have to cut it for the three and a half, so that would make it...
They would charge you for every snip that they did, right?
If you want New York State fencing, wanna, I just wanna see it.
And we had a fence in the whole yard that was really old and not in good shape. So we are just trying to replace that.
And when I was driving around your neighborhood the other day, I also noticed that at 477, and at 422, they have fences that come almost right up to the road as well, so...
And 408?
Yeah, I might have missed another one.
Not directly across from me, but the next house.
Mm-hmm. One in the bottom left corner. So it's not going to be something that would stand out necessarily in the neighborhood?
Right, and it's also for safety. There is a funeral home just shy of us across the street, so there's lots of traffic. So my daughter hasn't actually been able to play in the yard for a month and a half now since...
How old is your daughter?
Five.
Five.
Because there's lots of traffic, the parking lot is overflowing, so then they park on both sides of the street. We also have a nursing home down the road, and there are lots of people who catch the bus and walk through. And just Friday, they stole a neighbor's package. So the yard is more for safety protection. It kind of keeps people and things, there's a lot of stray cats in our neighborhood.
Fence won't keep them out.
Well, they'll jump over, but they won't come in like they're being very disrespectful now. They're sitting on my porch, peeing on my porch. It kind of deters them that they're not really wanted. They sneak instead of assuming that they live there.
We've called Greg several times on dogs, and we're dog friendly, but at the same time, we don't know which dogs are people friendly to stranger friendly or not. And so therefore, it gives us a scare when we see three or four large dogs in our yard, and we don't have that fence there.
You're going to have a gate across the driveway as well?
Yes, sir.
There's one there currently.
That was my question, gate across the driveway, thank you.
Will the gate, so for this survey map that you have, it shows that the, looks like the fence is going to go around the entire perimeter of the property.
Right.
But on this drawing that you have from Empire Fence, it looks like the portion that goes across the driveway is going to be set back some.
Well, because we're not going up to the road, you know, we're still leaving the grass in the front of the house. It's only up to the neighbor's front.
Front of their house, okay.
If it will.
Thank you.
Probably to where the right-of-way starts.
I don't know the language, but I'm assuming yes.
Where the, the right-of-way is where the town has the right, they could pave up to that.
Yes.
They don't do it, but they could.
But they could, where that grass is. It's our own, but we do have to maintain it.
Right, so that's where the fence is going to stop, right?
Yes.
Exactly, and that's where it was before.
Okay.
Now I'm confused. I'm seeing, I'm seeing four-foot fence, four-foot chain link fence. But on the application, I'm seeing six-foot high fence.
That's for the two sides.
That's for the two sides up into the back of the neighbor's house.
That's not already up?
On one side, the other side is not.
So you want to bring the other side to match the...
Yes, to match the neighbors, yes.
That's not very much, that's not very much, is it? It's a, how much of, how much of a six-foot do you need?
It's a couple panels on the side where the neighbor, he has two dogs, and when, in his fence, if it was in good shape and dogs couldn't see through it, then my daughter can go out in the yard and play. Our swing set is in the front yard, because we don't have a backyard, unfortunately. And so with my daughter being in the front yard swinging, the dogs bark, because they're looking through their fence, even though it's a wooden fence, because it's got, it's just not upkeep. And so, by us doing it at least up into the back of his yard, would give him privacy, would give the dogs not being able to see, and they wouldn't bark as much.
You're probably talking about 25, 30 feet, looks like, from the survey map?
Yeah, I think it's like four or five panels.
Four or five panels, yep, exactly, sir.
And they're eight-foot panels?
Yes.
Maybe not even that many, because it's already started, so probably three.
Four or five, it's four or five.
Are you going to be eliminating the chain link fence that is, will be like in between?
Mm-hmm, yes.
You're not going to have chain link?
No, we're going to take that off.
Completely off, and then just bring the chain link from the wood fence all the way around the front?
Yes.
Is it going to be...
Yeah, the black chain link.
Yep.
We gotta stay in code.
Okay.
Yeah. Sorry about that.
No, no, it's... They're more appealing looking than the...
Agree.
Yep.
If you guys see a different fence in the, in the New York State fencing that you said you would say, hey, it would even be more appealing, we wouldn't be opposed to going that route. We just want something sturdy, that looks good, and that's...
We let you pick whatever you'd like.
Yeah.
You have to live there, not us.
Thank you.
The poles that are in this picture, they're not put in yet, are they?
Which ones?
They look like old ones.
No, they...
Those are the old poles.
Those are the old ones that were taken out?
Yeah, those were the old poles that were taken out, sir.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the board? Want your brochure back? Here. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here who'd like to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone who'd like to talk to us about it? Seeing none, we will close the hearing with respect to this matter and move on to the next matter on our agenda.
Jim, did you want to mention anything, that they had five letters of support?
Oh, yes, attached to the, thank you. Attached to the petition was letters of support from the neighbor at 401 Crossfield, which is directly next door, 402 Crossfield, which is across the street, 408 Crossfield, which is also across the street, 411 Crossfield, and 338 Bleeker, which I believe is the street around back. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Next item on the agenda is case number ZB 1605-3, upon the matter of request by Frederick and Regina Pollak for a special use permit to harbor four Hanswith coop and exercise pen pursuant to Section 235-70 of Town Code on premises 115 Birch Hills Drive in an R2 residential district.
Fred Pollak, Pollak actually, 115 Birch Hills Drive.
You could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay.
Try to get a variance for chickens. I laid out, I actually had a packet, pretty much describes my feelings, how we take care of them, what the pen looks like, what the girls look like, how long I've had them, some aerial pictures of my location in respect to my neighbors. And I submitted, I believe, eight or 10 names of my neighbors.
If I understand correctly, you started out with four, eight years ago?
Yes.
So the two that are in the pictures, those are eight years old?
No. No, they, no. They're both about four years old.
All right, so you've had a series of chickens in and out?
Yes.
Obviously, nobody ever complained about it, apparently?
No, half the people, and nobody knew I had them, really.
Your neighbor said they didn't know you had them, so... What brings you here tonight, then, that, did you see that...
Somebody actually had a tractor that I was using as a Christmas decoration, a full-blown nine-on-tractor. I brought it up from my camp, and I was using that for a Christmas decoration. And I put up a portable shed, those plastic buildings, which I got a '67 Dodge in there. I was doing some work in my garage, and I don't want anything to hit it. Maybe that started it, but my original notice said somebody complained, I...
So somebody came around and noticed that you had the chickens in the backyard?
I don't know how, but apparently they did.
So you were unaware of the fact that, until that was pointed out to you, that you need to get a special use permit to house chickens in the town?
Eventually.
Or goats, or cows, or any other animals, monkeys?
Eventually, actually, I found out that you needed a permit, but it was like six years into it, and I don't...
All right.
Where I live, it's, like I said, I don't have a rodent problem, I don't, no odor problem.
Well, the reason I bring that up is because there's a number of people who actually watch the broadcast of our meetings, and so I try and use as much of that exposure to educate people to what the requirements are. So anybody who's thinking of acquiring chickens should stop here first, before they go to the pet store. Okay? But it looks to me like you've been successful with these, to the point where your neighbors have had no complaints now for eight years?
Yes.
Are you familiar with any of the other applications that we've had? We've imposed requirements on others who have asked us for special use permits to house chickens, and one of those conditions has been that you provide a certification to the town annually from a vet that says that the chickens are healthy and not infected with any diseases or, you know, contagious conditions. You willing to do that?
Yes. Think it's, I think it's a little bit over the top, but I mean, if that's what I gotta do to keep them, that's what I gotta do.
Okay, I'm trying to think what other conditions have we had?
Yeah, let me comment on that, when you say over the top. I think one of the reasons we put that in is the Center for Disease Control has actually come out with a recommendation that people do not have chickens in their backyard because of the disease that they're having around the country. Particularly when people buy mail-ordered chicks, and you never know where they've been or how they were hatched, and salmonella has become a problem with it. So they have actually recommended not to have backyard chickens.
Well, actually, I purchased mine through Tractor Supply, and only through them, so... They're live chicks, they're not eggs, they're not hatched eggs.
Right, right.
Know where they come from. But I mean, if it takes me, I'll take them to the vet, I take them to the vet.
One of the other things is that we, I noticed your application is to house up to four. At the present time, you have two?
Yes.
All right, so you're looking to potentially acquire two more?
Well, it's for a good reason. I don't, I don't force them to have eggs. There's no artificial lighting in their coop, okay? Chicken probably runs normally a temperature between 103 and 107 degrees. So in the winter, they huddle together on a perch, okay? And that's how they keep their warmth, along with I have heated water in there. It takes a little bit off, but it's not a completely enclosed cage or coop. The top is, the bottom's got plastic, so... Four was a reasonable number, because they can, they all fit, for one thing, and they all huddle together and kind of keep themselves warm. They seem to mind it, and...
Well, we've, one of the other limitations that we've imposed in the past... is that they're not at any time be more than four in the coop, so obviously you're, you're okay with that as well, right?
Yes, it's, coop's pretty much built for, uh, actually, six or eight would fit, but nah, I don't, I don't need that. I'm not harvesting eggs for sale or anything like that.
I think in our other cases, we've said that of the four, none could be replaced.
We have.
So if you lose one, you're, you're at three maximum.
Well, at this point, this year, um, two is gonna be my maximum anyways, because they're pretty much gone. You know, you don't- Not a year around animal to purchase, uh, at least not through Tractor Supply.
I think that one of the reasons that we've imposed that condition is we've done that on people who are starting out and think that having chickens is a great idea and that they'd like to get into this. There seems to be some kind of a trend going on about having, uh, chickens and your own, using their eggs instead of buying them in the store. And, um, so we've put the limit on that they're not going to replace it and have an ongoing thing. I think we've also limited it to five years, haven't we?
We did.
Five years are the lives of the chickens, but in your case, even though we didn't know about it, you've been doing it for eight years. So, uh, would you be willing to come back in five years and let us check up, or whoever's here then, check up on, uh, how things are going?
Sure.
All right.
I just have a question on a comment that he made, and it's more of a learning experience on my end. You mentioned that, uh, you don't force them to have eggs.
No.
What would be forcing them to, how would you force them?
If you kept your pen, the eggs you buy in a store come from chickens, okay, they live in a coop and that's all they do is lay eggs. And to lay eggs and get the maximum amount from them, they, they keep them in a lit coop constantly, twenty-four seven. And when they're done laying eggs, they're done.
So that, that light experience for them makes them hatch more eggs?
Because at night, they automatically go to their coop and they're done for the day. You know, when the sun sets. So we just chose not to do that, uh, what they do. And then, like I say, our chickens, they actually have periods of time, uh, probably two, three times a year where they'll quit laying eggs for up to two months, maybe three.
And why's that?
Uh, when they molt, like now, spring's coming, like a dog sheds, they pretty much lose their feathers to an extent. Um, they just don't lay eggs.
I'm, I'm learning something new. Thank you.
Maybe in, uh, maybe in the fall, I've seen it where they quit. Uh, in the winter, they don't lay as many, uh, don't expect them to. If you put a light bulb in there, you change their whole, uh, inner operations and just produce eggs, and it's not that, uh, important to hassle them, to be truthful.
Okay.
If I could ask a question, did you build this coop yourself, sir?
Yes.
It's, we've seen a lot of applications. This is a quality construction. It is solid. I mean, it looks great. And while sometimes we don't vote in favor of, uh, granting the, the permit, um, I mean, you're in the middle of the forest and you've got a quality-built coop, so, I mean, it's a solid application. For the people who are watching on TV, a good coop goes a long way.
And even backing up to the woods, you haven't had any problems with any, uh, predator animals coming up for the chickens, huh?
A raccoon will come by and pretty much they leave it alone. I put, uh, I don't have chicken wire. I actually have contractor stainless steel, uh, small chuck wire on it with fender washers. Raccoons are pretty handy and they can pull things apart and so I chose to go a different route underneath the coop. It's, uh, the same, same thing, so there is drainage in the coop, but it has the same mesh in the, in the bottom. I keep the doors actually locked with a lock. Yeah, they come around, but they, they pretty much don't mess with the chickens and-
Have you ever had an experience where they got in there?
Yes, I had one killed by a raccoon. Actually, it drove me to the stainless steel mesh.
Okay.
But you got raccoons all the time, I mean, in the neighborhood and not necessarily in my yard all the time, but it's, I do live in the woods.
Thank you. We learn from these things. You know, we go to classes and they teach us about, you know, area variances and use variances and what the standards are, but they haven't told us anything about chickens yet, even though we regularly seem to have chickens coming in front of us. So we try and learn from the people who are-
If you read the little thing I wrote, they're actually, uh, it's quite a learning curve to them.
Yeah.
Not just, uh, I don't know, I gotta say, uh, if you've ever seen the Rocky movie where they're out there chasing them and, you know, when he's in training, one of the old movies, right? And it's just kind of a stupid animal. They're not. They're very, uh, personable with people, at least family, not necessarily strangers. They know their names. I'm not saying they come like my dog does, but they'll let you, let us walk up to them and they'll stop, you don't have to chase them. It just was a little bit of a learning curve that they were more than just a chicken, you know, just-
Sounds good. All right. All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board? Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this application? Step right up.
Hi, my name is Amy Warda and I live at 135 Birch Hills. And, uh, we've lived there for, uh, almost three years now. And we were there for two years before we knew he even had chickens. And, uh, and then it was, uh, they're cute. They, uh, kind of poke their little heads around the corner like, hi! And they're just, they're nice. He keeps his house beautiful. We've never, I've heard that they can draw rodents. I've never seen that. I mean, God, we live in, we do, we live in the forest, so we see other things, but I, I think it's kind of a pleasure to have them. They're not, it's not like you hear a rooster or anything. It's just, uh, kind of cute little chickens. They're just Fred's chickens. And we, we have absolutely no problem at all with them. And that's pretty much it.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak in favor of this application? Anyone wish to speak in opposition to the application? Anyone like to talk to us about chickens, or coops, or steel, was it stainless steel mesh you used? Seeing none, we'll close that case and move on to the next matter.
Jim, he's got nine signatures in support.
Oh, yes, thank you. For some reason, I'm drawing a blank on that tonight. Attached to the petition was a, um, list of signatures from nine of the neighbors, uh, including Ms. Warda who just spoke and another occupant of 135 Birch Hills Drive, 125, two from 80 Birch Hills Drive, one from 48 Breezeway and 50 Breezeway, which is just across the street, uh, another one from somewhere on Birch Hill Drive, I'm not sure what the number is, and 91. And all of them, uh, in favor and some even indicating, as Ms. Warda did, that she didn't know they were there. Now we'll close that case.
Next item on the agenda is case number ZB 1605-4, upon the matter of request by Corey Schmidt for an area variance to convert an existing twelve-foot-by-eighteen-foot detached garage into a shed exceeding maximum allowable square footage on premises 36 Parkside Crescent in an R2 residential district.
Corey Schmidt, 36 Parkside Crescent.
You swear affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay.
So I would, I'm requesting the area variance for the existing garage to be, um, considered a, a shed, which will allow me to build the new garage on the opposite side of my house. And the main reason for that is, um, one, it's only a single-car garage, so it's not much use to store all our stuff. But the other main reason is the access to that garage. Between my house and the property line is only six and a half feet. So my, uh, my one car, we can only get in there if we fold the mirrors, and my truck is non-existent, so it basically sits in the front yard all the time.
I think it was there the other day when I drove by.
Um, it, yeah, it may have been. Yep.
So you're going, you want to leave the, the garage where it is now?
Correct.
Turn that into a shed?
Yes.
And then you're gonna build a big garage next to where the house is?
Correct.
When I was looking at your drawings, it seems to me that the front of your garage is going to be wider than the frontage of your house on the street. Is that about right?
Um, I think it's, it's pretty similar. I think it may be a little bit wider, but the overall square footage footprint, it's smaller than the existing house.
Right, but I think if you're looking at the street, your garage is gonna look bigger than your house from the front.
Yeah, in, in width. It's only a single car, um, or single story.
Right, single story and it's a single car, maybe a car and a half back, right?
Correct.
And then you're gonna use the back part of it for storage? It looks like you're gonna have a little overhang?
Right.
We'll make it clear you're not going to be enclosing the overhang?
No, that'll be, that'll be open. It'll only have the roof portion on it. Probably be a woodpile stacked up against the back of the garage under there, just to keep it out of the elements.
We learn from past experiences, so we want to nail that down now that you're not-
Right.
No plans to enclose that?
Not at all, no.
All right.
I don't want to enclose it.
Just to be clear, this new garage is not before us at all.
It is not.
The only thing before us is whether or not the applicant can build a shed that is twenty-three square feet larger, build.
Right.
Have a shed that is twenty-three square feet larger than what is allowed under the code.
Right. And your new garage is ninety feet under what the code allows.
Correct.
Which, you're not actually gonna rebuild that garage, the old garage. You're not gonna rebuild it. You're just gonna make it look like a shed.
Right, I just, basically, I'm only allowed one garage on the property. So I just need it to be considered a shed-
Right.
-to allow me to build the, the new structure. But the existing garage is in pretty good shape, um, considering its age, and I don't need to make any changes to it. I want to keep it as-is. The, the only change would be, um, the driveway that leads up to the existing one. I'm removing that driveway and that's gonna be either a garden or grass, depending on, on where it is.
And you're gonna be removing that driveway all the way from the street, all the way to that new shed?
Yes. Everything that's there that's driveway is coming out. The gravel underneath it coming out replaced with topsoil.
Will you be keeping the garage door on the shed?
Um, currently, yes. I'm not opposed to, you know, taking that off and putting two, uh, swing doors or something on there, uh, just so it looks a little less garage-like and more shed-like. So I'm, I'm open to that.
Is there a second story on your new garage?
No. The, uh, the reason for that little dormer bump out and the windows up there, the windows are just to let, um, light in, so it's a little bit easier to deal with inside of the garage. And the other reason for the dormer is, um, my existing, the, the house has a lot of different roof lines. And because it is a wide garage, thirty feet wide, I thought that would be a lot, a big plane of just flat roof. So I wanted to break up that roof line and make it match my house more closely. So it, it kind of serves two purposes, let light in, function, and then aesthetics from the street as well.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
I saw in your, uh, letter to the Zoning Board of Appeals, there was one reference to the garage being two-hundred-and-twenty-three square feet and then one to it being two-hundred-and-thirty-three square feet. Just want to confirm that you're seeking a variance for two-hundred-and-twenty-three square feet.
Yeah, um, the, uh, the original property survey, um, has it at, um, twelve-point-two by eighteen-point-three, which is two-hundred-and-twenty-three.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we'll open it to public input. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Anyone here that wishes to speak in opposition to the application? Anyone who'd like to talk to us about sheds, garages? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to that. Thank you. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is case number ZB 1605-5, upon the matter of request by Tara L. Jones for an area variance to install a six-foot-high side yard fencing exceeding maximum permitted height on premises 37 Somerville Drive in an R2 residential district.
Names and address first?
Tara Jones, 37 Somerville Drive.
Todd Jones, 37 Somerville Drive.
You swear affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay.
We're applying for a variance for, um, a six-foot fence on our south side, um, property line. We don't have a whole lot of side yard there. And our living room window is, because the, the house next door sits on the back south corner of that lot, um, basically his front yard and his, um, driveway area are right outside our living room window. I do have, um, a series of pictures here that you don't have that just show, like, where the property line is. You can kind of see, I've tried to in the past grow some zebra grasses and other different things that, I don't know, for one reason or another, they just haven't done anything.
And I know what one of the reasons might be, when I was at your house the other day, there were four huge deer-
Right?
In the back. They, I mean, I couldn't believe the size of them. And they were by your shed and the tall arborvitae's there, and they were just munching away.
Munching away.
Oh, yeah.
They came right up to the, the living room window the other day and we were nose to nose. I was sitting on the couch and they're standing outside and we were literally nose to nose.
And then, then the one walked in between, to the right of your house, was standing right in between the two, and that's not a wide area there, but, yeah, they were big ones.
Oh, yes.
So you have access to your property from both Somerville Drive and that alley that goes behind it?
Yes.
Yes.
And your neighbor only has access through the alley, right?
Yes.
Because of the slope in the front of the house?
Yes.
So when they pull in, they're, you pull in to your driveway and use your garage mostly, it looked like, right?
Yes.
But he's using the back, so every time he pulls in or pulls out, it's affecting your-
Lights and, yeah.
And I think the chairman's point also, I mean, it goes to what you were saying before, that your neighbor's property, the house is situated almost backwards or reversed from yours, where his backyard is your front yard, almost, because of how the properties are set.
Yes.
That's correct, yes.
So it's very unique to this particular property and how the houses are situated?
Yes.
Yes.
He's figured out the madness to my method.
Does that make me mad?
I don't know.
In the, in the survey that they've got designated in pink where you're putting the fence, it doesn't show that, it shows one straight line of fence on that, what would be the south property line. It doesn't show the fence coming toward the house at all? Are you, like, where your steps are and your front driveway is?
No, we weren't going to, um, to do anything different. We were just going to have it in that one straight line.
Okay, so it's not gonna be coming in toward the fence, or toward the house?
No.
Okay, all right.
Is the fence, uh, it's a knoll there, right? I mean, your next-door neighbor is higher than this.
Yes.
Is the fence going on top of that knoll, or is it down in the, at the lower part of it?
It's kind of in the middle.
I don't know where your property line is exactly, that's my question.
It's kind of in the middle. I don't know if you could see in the pictures, but right at the top of that slope, not quite to the top, is where the fence would be.
So you'll have some advantage of that rise in the ground.
I take it this is a view out your living room window, is that it?
Yes.
That is right from our living room outside.
When I visited today, I was, it was today, so I didn't get out and walk back like everybody else seems to have. I just didn't have time to do that, hence the question, you know, about that.
Yep.
I didn't see any deer either.
Thank goodness.
That's too bad. I'd like to see them.
Come over to my place sometime.
My place, too.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Is there anyone here that wishes to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here that wishes to speak in opposition to this application? Step right up.
How you doing?
Evening.
I'm Dawn Johnson, and this is Alan Johnson. We have the property at 27 Somerville Drive.
That'd be the White House?
Yes.
Immediately south, okay.
Yes.
Uh, one of our concerns is, there already is a panel that was put up there at the rear part of the property and that almost appears like it's on our property. And we've had problems in the past- problems in the past with Tara and her family encroaching on this property. When we first purchased it, in the front, they had a porch, a swing, trees. She had blackberry bushes. We removed those to clean up the property, and it got into a big hassle, to a point where her son contacted my son at a public skating rink and told him to tell our family to get the blank off their property. And it's very difficult, so I tried to explain to her. We had closed, we own the property now. They said we ruined their yard. It wasn't their yard. It's part of our property. So there's been this ongoing-
Have you had a survey done?
We have a survey.
Alright, and has the, uh, did the surveyor stake the property line?
See, where their retaining wall is, they only have a foot of that property. So our concern is how the fence would run up along there, and there's trees in the back. So it almost appears like those trees would have to be removed for them to put a fence if they're talking from the front up to the back of the property.
Would, are the, would you consider those trees their trees or your trees?
You know, that was, I was, when we bought the property, it was way overgrown. There was vines. You couldn't even see that little cottage. It was a cottage. It was built in 1920s. And Mrs. Bernstein had, the guy, the gentleman that lived there, Eddie Dunn, was, part of his agreement was he was supposed to clean that up for, you know, maintain the property, which he never did. So we bought it with the intention of building a house. And we, we've since then found another one in Arundicote, but because of the ongoing problems, we, I, we, our attorney advised us to put no trespassing signs, 'cause we can't, we weren't over there all time, to guard the property with encroachment. And the no trespassing signs are up, you probably see them.
Saw those.
Well, let me-
I just wanted to explain-
But here's, here's my question, is, when you, this, this is the survey that you received when you purchased the property.
Yes.
Alright, and attached to their application is a copy of the survey that they received when they purchased the property. And both of your surveys say that this line that separates you is 110 feet in length, alright? So I, my question is, the surveyors agree on the length of the line, and I'll bet they'll agree on the location of the line as well.
Sure.
And so the, my question is, have you had it staked? The surveyors, when they do the map, usually for an extra fee, will stake the line so that you know right where the line is in relation to concrete retaining walls, which doesn't show on the map with the application. Their surveyor didn't include it, but it is on this one, but it's on their property.
Our stance is, maybe we shouldn't have come up here as a post. We don't really care if she puts a fence up. We just wanna make sure it's done properly, legally, and to the survey. And I don't feel I should have to incur the expense of doing that the night, for instance, of the skating rink. This is, um, her son approached my son and told him those comments, and so I tried to talk to Tara, and I said, "This doesn't have to get into a situation where our kids are fighting. I mean, it's over and done with. I closed on the property." That night, she had a truckload of goons show up, threatening to hurt my husband that night.
Alright, so what we, so if we, if I understand you correctly, your concern isn't with the fence. You don't have a problem with the fence. You just wanna make sure that the fence is located on their property and not on yours.
Legally, you don't want any future legal problems.
So if we were to, uh, approve their application, with the condition that it be located on their property and not on yours.
Right.
Which the law would require anyway, you wouldn't have a problem with that, right?
Well, and then the only other point I'd like to make is, no, I wouldn't have a problem with that. The only other point I would like to make is this access road behind the property, that is true. That is how person accesses 27 Somerville. There isn't a driveway in the front, but that is, on our survey, deeded a parking area. So we're, the town had told us, we just resolved this issue, what, last year, after we talked to them so many times over the years of this nonsense. Um, that is essentially our driveway up there. And one of the problems, that access road is being slowly shut in by people. There's a, somebody's put a bar across there. Another guy has a shed that's on it from the one side. So that access road is supposedly the emergency access road if they had to get up their fire equipment. It's also access for RGNE, cable, phone. So it seems like the width of that access road is slowly being encroached upon, and I wouldn't want that fence to encroach further on the access road.
Well, have you seen, have you seen the application?
Uh, no, we haven't had time.
The application is for a single row of fencing that would start even with the, there's a wood fence that's there that goes up to the back line, and it's gonna continue that down to essentially to the front corner of their place. So it's just gonna go in a straight line, just one panel after another, uh, down that line. So it wouldn't be affecting the road, the road in back.
Well, 'cause that one panel that's there was the one that she put up. We weren't even sure if it was, that's the one we're talking about. We're not sure, 'cause that was just put up in the last couple of years. Um-
Dad, that was just put up in the last couple, within a couple of years?
And we weren't even sure if a permit application was put up. It's just all of a sudden, one day, it was there. So, and that looks like, if you stand at the front of our property and look up where the retaining wall is, and look at one foot back, then there's a section of trees, and then there's that wooden panel that looks like it's encroaching on our property. That's one of our concerns.
There's two ways that it can be ascertained whether or not the fence is in the right location or not. The first is that a surveyor can come out now and make sure that it's in the right place, or when one of the first of you to sell gets a survey done, the survey is gonna come back, and if it shows that the fence isn't in the right location, then you're, it's gonna have to be dealt with then. Let me tell you, it's a lot easier, I'm telling, speaking to all four of you, it's a lot easier right now to resolve it now than it is when it's trying, when one of you is trying to sell the property. So if we approve the fence, you don't have a problem with that, just as long as it's located on their property.
Exactly.
Okay, alright.
Properly surveyed and legal. That's all we're asking.
And as far as the access road goes, this doesn't have anything to do with the access road, so.
Well, the width, as long as the fence doesn't go up into it, it won't-
There's a 15-foot right of way there, and it's, if you've ever been back there, eight 15-foot.
I was back there the other day.
Right.
Well, we measured it one time.
It's an interesting arrangement.
It goes in all different directions, and they keep moving it one way and back the other. And that is, actually was a cottage. I mean, it's built in 1920, it's been there. I mean, it may be a little old cottage.
Or property, or the-
Ours.
Yours was a cottage.
Yes.
Okay, alright.
Yes.
And the long story of how we came to acquire it, but we won't go there.
Okay.
It's been a nightmare, let me tell you.
Alright, well, hopefully, uh, this won't add to it.
Okay.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here that would like to-
Here it is, Mrs. Jones. Do you want these, um, back too, or, okay?
Those are the applicant's pictures, I think.
Oh, okay.
Is there, uh, anyone else that would like to speak in opposition to this application? Or I guess they really weren't, or address the application? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing. Is there anything that you wanted to bring out in light of what was stated?
Uh, no, I think we're all set. And when we did, we did have the, uh, permit for the, uh, I believe it's three sections I have in there. That was all done by the permit. And when I measured, started measuring everything out from my survey map from the existing location, I found the survey stakes in that one corner, and I made sure that everything was on my side of the, uh, the survey stakes.
Alright. Stake's still in place?
Stake is still back there. You gotta root around a little bit for it, but you'll see where somebody drove in a metal rod, and when you go out there with the, uh, the tape measure, it comes right close to the, uh, the tape maps there.
You might find that it's worth the cost to have the surveyor check that out to be sure before you actually-
Before we go-
Put all the fencing in?
We can do that. That will not be an issue.
If you call the surveyor who did your survey, you know, they'll probably, since they already would have their notes and everything, they can probably help you.
Okay.
It's, might cost you as much as a panel or so of the fence, but it might save you tons of money in the long run.
Yes, we will definitely make sure it's on our side.
There you go. Alright.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda.
Case number ZB 1605-6. Upon the matter of request by Carrie Brown for a use variance to construct a plus or minus 3.5 by plus or minus 30-foot dock without a principal structure on the site on premises 375 Bayfront Lane North in an R3 residential district.
Carrie Brown, 44 Ravine Ave.
If you'd raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that everything you say here tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. Okay, so, um, what I wanna do is a use variance for a dock. Um, I wanna construct a dock approximately three by five feet by 30 feet long, um, in the middle of my property for private use and boat storage. Um, yeah, that's-
Alright. Just, uh, for the record, we received a letter from, uh, Frank Ardino, who lives at 323 Bayfront Lane North, uh, in opposition. He's in Florida. But in his letter, he makes a number of, of points that I thought were interesting. When I went down to the site of the property to look at it, um, I only went as far as your property, but slightly to the north, there was a staircase. But from reading his letter, I'm gathering that staircase isn't how you would access-
No.
-your property on the bay from the property on Ravine.
Nope, those stairs are posted. I'm not allowed to use those stairs. So I would have to walk down the street and across the sidewalk on Bayfront North.
So you'd have to come down-
Mm-hmm.
Ravine, up, or up Ravine to Point Pleasant, all the way down Point Pleasant, and come around?
Yes, because I don't own the slope that conjoins my property, um, up on Ravine and on Bayfront.
Alright, and I, I have you ask the town about whether or not it's possible to put in a staircase or some kind of access from your property, from one part of your property to the other, across the slope that the town owns?
That would be ideal for me to do next, yes. But I've not asked the town to-
Because one of the points that he makes is that because you have so far to go, right, that when you're there using the property for boating.
Right.
Um, there's no sanitary facilities, no place, no bathroom for anyone to use. And so he questions, you know, are you really gonna go all the way back up that way to Ravine?
Well, I wouldn't hang out on my boat without taking it on the water. I mean, I wouldn't sit down there.
No, 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 no. He's talking about, he's talking, well, let me read you what he says.
Yeah, no, I know. I know he says that there's no sanitary, and I, there's only grass there that I would, but I'm not gonna be sitting down on that property. It was only used for boat storage currently, or it would be only used for boat storage. And for me to store my boat, take my boat out, I wouldn't need electricity down there. I wouldn't need any water.
Alright, because what you're asking us for, and we've run into this in other situations, is a use variance.
Right.
And in order to qualify for a use variance, you have to show that as presently zoned, you're unable to realize a reasonable rate of return on the property without the variance to allow you to do what it is you're asking us to do. So, and that's a pretty difficult standard to meet, and that requires dollars and cents proof. What did you pay for the property? How much do you pay to maintain, uh, the property? If the property is, continues to be zoned as it is, will that impair the resale value? If so, how? To what extent? How much? What other uses could it be put to under the applicable zoning, and are any of them viable uses for the property? Alright, so, um, we don't have that in front of us. We've had other situations that we've dealt with in the past, uh, further south, uh, along the bay, where there was, um, there were a number of, of homes that fronted the bay, and then the county came in and took over the road that separated them into two lots instead of one. And we've allowed for some docks that are right in front of the houses where they cross the road that the county owns, and then they're at their dock, and then they go back to their house. But that's not your situation.
Right, I live up the hill.
You live up the hill and quite a ways up the hill. And so, your situat, and you can't, we had a, uh, applicant recently who had four lots, but he didn't wanna combine them so that the house was on the lot, but he wanted to store his boats on a lot that fronted the lake. And we turned him down for the use variance because he hadn't satisfied the dollars and cents proof. And that's where, I mean, in addition to the other concerns, uh, that's, the concern that I, that I see is that this is different from those applications, because this isn't a dock that's right in front of your house. This is a dock that you have to, basically, I think it's about a half mile, the way you would have to go to get there, maybe even longer?
Right, but I would have to trailer my boat, and there's nowhere for me to put my boat on my property 'cause of the hill. So I can't put my boat, I can't back my boat down my driveway and then drive it out, 'cause it's just not possible. So I want to have my boat on the water so I don't have to trailer it to and from the boat dock. I'd have to leave my boat up on the road, and I can't do that.
Unfortunately, owning a boat is a self-created issue, and that's one of the things that we've dealt with, and that's why we need the dollars and cents proof.
So, did-
I mean, I, I guess my question is this. One of the things that you'd have to show is that there's, that without a dock, you can't reasonably use waterfront property, uh, as it's currently zoned, and that only a dock is going to give you a reasonable rate of return on the property. And you haven't tried to sell it.
Can I ask a question? How did, how did you acquire, did it come with the property?
I bought it together.
You bought it?
Yep, it was one. I paid one dollar amount for the house and the property.
So the prior, previous owner owned both lots?
Mm.
Now that, I know your house has been in front of us years before.
Okay.
One of my earliest years on the board, there was a big issue, as I recall, about the retaining wall, 'cause I remember trying to drive down Ravine Avenue after I was able to find it. And, uh, it's not exactly an easy thing to drive down. And, uh, so I, I know that there was concerns about the, is there a wall that's behind your house that holds the slope up?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Concrete.
I think that wall was what was in front of us.
Concrete wall?
Yeah. So you bought from the owner, from the guy who owned it then?
Yep.
And he owned this property on the bay at that time as well, as part of this house?
Yeah, I'm assuming. Yeah, that's how I bought it.
But there's no direct access from your property to the, on Ravine, to the property on the bay?
Right, unless I walk down the slope.
Unless you go down the slope?
Mm-hmm.
And you don't know yet whether or not there's any way you can do that?
Right.
I haven't been there. Are there other, uh, staircases going down that slope?
No, because all the properties, this, this is the property that's the end of Point Pleasant. You come down the property, there's the big loop there, and you have to go around the loop to get to the houses that are south of there.
And it's further north.
There's no way you can turn your car to go onto, I think it's Schnackle Drive or something like that. So you have to loop around to get in the right direction. It's very condensed.
Her property's north of that.
It's north of there, and you have to park your car, and there are reserved spaces, so you, those are-
Park your car and then walk up.
And then you walk way up towards the end of the sidewalk is where her property is. I noticed there's, I think there's three other lots that, that don't have houses on them, and that don't appear to have docks on them, but that appear to have some boats connected with something.
Yeah, I think the one has a mooring buoy all the way to the end, has a mooring buoy.
And they appear to be owned by the people who own the houses that are on the east side of the slope that separates your house from this Bayfront property. And the lot is way too small, uh, to build a house on.
Right, it's 30 by 90 feet.
I've got a question about this page with the pictures on it.
I've got a question about this page with the pictures on it.
Okay.
I'm assuming this is down at the bottom of Ravine, and there's one here with a tree right in the middle of the, is that the tree that you were talking about needs to be?
No, there's a tree, here, I have a better, bigger picture. The tree actually fell down, and there's a whole bunch of wood that's just lying there.
Okay, that's this tree.
So that's facing, yeah, this is facing the water, that's facing the property. I had to take that picture for the DEC when I got this approved, because I had to show all pictures for all trees, all borders and everything on the property. So that's why that picture's there, because you need to know where the trees are.
Okay, but it's not there anymore.
No, that's still, this is the tree that fell down?
Oh, okay, that's a big one, yeah.
Yeah, so right there, that's the tree.
Oh, okay, I got it. Why would that have to be, well, it doesn't have to be taken down?
No, the tree remnants have to be with it.
Okay. I belong to the Point Pleasant Fire Department. I'm very, I'm very familiar with Ravine Drive. I'm very familiar with the properties that used to be there before the big fire. Did you know about that?
I've been told about it. There's a truck step down there.
Well, you tried driving a fire truck down Schnackel Drive, that's a...
Yeah, but that's an experience.
It sure is, because there's a time there where you're sitting in the front of the cab, and the road goes up before it goes way down. So you're looking at the sky, and then all of a sudden, you're looking at the bay. And you don't want to go very fast.
Can I ask a question about the, to get to your property, you got to walk down that sidewalk, right?
Uh-huh.
Is that sidewalk considered an easement for everybody that lives along there to get to their properties? Because everybody has to use that sidewalk, right?
Right.
Don't you, so, question is, everybody that lives along in there must have some type of easement that that sidewalk is?
They have to cross through my property to get to their houses as well.
Right, so everybody's got...
Sidewalk, right.
Cross easements, I would imagine, to get to, that was my, well...
You mentioned that, you mentioned that one of the other properties has a mooring for their boat as opposed to a dock?
Yeah, there's a mooring buoy. I don't know.
What's a mooring buoy?
It's like a buoy that's off the shore that you can hook your boat up to.
You hook your boat up to, in lieu of a dock?
It just floats there.
Yeah, and you just, you throw the anchor out, and then you just, you moor it.
All right, and you wait out to get to the boat, or you take a little dinghy out or something to get to it?
You swim, yeah.
And have you looked into whether that would be permitted for this property for you?
Through the DEC, it can be.
All right, and that would be permitted under our zoning ordinance?
Through the DEC.
Actually, the town doesn't have, require a permit for mooring. That's strictly handled through the DEC, coordinated review with...
I already have a, I already have a permit through the DEC to build a dock.
So one of the things that we're obligated to explore
Okay.
is alternatives that do not require a variance.
Right.
All right, so if you can moor your boat to a mooring buoy without running afoul of the zoning ordinance and without needing a variance, then I question whether or not you need a variance, right?
The only, in, to her defense, not that I'm defending one way or another, mooring buoy is not as secure as tying a boat up to a dock.
I'm sure of that. I have no doubt. The problem is, as I said, part of what we're obligated on use variance is we're required to have dollars and cents proof that shows that you can't realize a reasonable rate of return on the property as it's presently zoned. And we're obligated to explore and find, to be unsatisfactory, alternatives that would not require a variance. All right, so... I guess where I'm going is, do you have any dollars and cents proof that shows that without a dock, you can't realize a reasonable rate of return for the use of, for the property that you have on the bay?
I mean, I have, the only thing I have is that the house, the deed is for both the properties together.
Well, that I understand.
I don't have a price tag on how much it would be.
Right, but you, you know, you can buy a, you can have one deed that gives you the property on the bay and gives you another piece of property on the river. That doesn't mean that they're connected in any other way other than they're, that they're on the same deed because the same owner sold them to you as part of the same transaction. And what the ordinance is designed to prevent is a series of docks along the water that don't have residents there who are actually living there and keeping an eye on the boats and taking care of the property and that they're just using it as a dock.
Right. I mean, well, my house being right there, I could see the dock from my house. So I mean, I would be able to watch my own boat. I don't think I would have any, if I sold the property, then I think my property wouldn't be worth anything because I don't have waterfront edge, even though I have water view from my house.
I don't know. And we can't, we can't make that determination with the materials that you've given us in your application.
Right.
So are you willing to have us table your application so you can go and try and find out, get dollars and cents proof? And it's got to show us that a dock is the difference between a reasonable rate of return and not a reasonable rate of return. Okay?
Okay.
All right. Any other questions or comments from the board?
Yeah, I just have a comment to make. I'm sorry, Mike. You were talking about easements down through there, and there is a sidewalk that runs the entire length through there, and everybody has access that way. Otherwise, they, they wouldn't be able to get to their homes unless they climb down the hill, which...
Or by boat.
Or by boat, yeah.
Or by boat. And of course, with the, the bay being open and closed half the year and back and forth, it's not ideal either. But the people, I, my experience has been, the people that live all through that are phenomenal people, just great, very willing to help out, maybe a few, I don't know, but I always found them excellent. When we do like a drill down there, oh, they're offering their John Deere trailers so we can move hose around and all that kind of stuff. They're very interested in keeping that safe and valuable, actually. So I would be interested to find out, when you, if you can, get back to us on reasonable return. I'd be personally very interested in that.
Yeah, I also have a letter from the DEC where they, it says, "While staff was on site, a neighbor indicated that the land where the dock is proposed is land not owned by you." She goes, "Please be aware that our permit cannot authorize work to be done on land not owned by you. This may be considered to be trespass. You should also obtain any required authorizations from other agencies such as the New York State Office of General Services and the US Corps, Army Corps." So a neighbor must have told them that I do not own this property.
Well, I'm assuming that you have a deed that shows that you do.
I do.
And I'm assuming that you probably have a survey that shows that you do.
Mm-hmm. So I'm just wondering why a neighbor would indicate that.
Because not everyone is actually informed as to what might be recorded and what might not be recorded, but another thing, because I don't see attached to your application a copy of a survey, so to eliminate any issue, if you could attach a copy of the survey, I'm sure you, when you purchased, you would have gotten the survey that shows the property. And you can attach a copy of the deed, and then any question about that will be out the board.
Okay.
If I could ask a question of staff, could a structure be built on this property?
No, it could not. It's without variance, and I don't know that DEC would allow...
A structure could be built on this property at all?
Based on the size, it would not be a non-conforming building lot. Beyond that, we always have Bayfront properties start with the DEC to determine what permitting would allow, and based on the size of this parcel, its proximity to the bay, potential limits with respect to services, I don't know what the, what the water and sewer service is down here, but it's, I don't know that they could get a permit from DEC to build anything on this parcel.
No, you said a second ago that the variances would not allow it. I mean, a structure could be fit, I mean, the side setbacks are what, two percent, five percent of the...
Ten percent of the width of the lot. Minimum dimension for a lot would be eighty by one-twenty, so there would be, multiple variances would be required in order to make this, and even then, I'm not sure if there's physically a structure that could be located there at this, and by our code, and then more importantly, I don't know that DEC would issue a permit for a structure based on the sanitary and health issues that you might need to address with respect to building a habitable structure.
So if there were any dollars and cents information that would come to us, it would be helpful to compare that with other properties that are in the area that do have houses and how this one could not have a structure built on it. Just saying.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
It looks like your DEC permit is for an open pile dock. When you applied, did you intend for the dock to be permanent? It looks like your application that's before the ZBA is for removable dock.
Removable, yeah.
So is that at odds with your DEC permit?
For the removable dock?
It looks like, yeah, what they, what you applied for and what they granted is an open pile dock. It looks like it's a permanent dock structure is what they approved.
The DEC approved a permanent one?
Yeah, if you look at the cross-sections.
I put on the, on the application for the DEC, a removable or permanent, and they said through the DEC, you do not need a permit through the DEC to place a removable dock. You would only need it for a, a permit for a permanent dock through the DEC. So I'm assuming they gave me a permanent dock because I didn't need one through the DEC.
So then, for purposes of the application before the town, it's a removable dock?
Well, either or, yeah.
Okay.
Removable would be ideal for me, but because I'm going to have to build the dock myself, so it would be easier for a removable dock.
And a lot of dock structures sometimes will get taken out. They may, they might be permanent in terms of use, but they're actually deconstructed for storage over winter so that they don't get damaged by ice damming on the bay. Or folks will apply for the, to the town for a bubbler permit if it is a permanent dock structure, and they want to have an aerator or bubbler to keep ice from forming around or near the dock structure.
Okay.
Which she has no power, so it would be difficult.
Correct, so the removable will be the, the better ideal option for her and long-term viability of dock structure down there.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
Just one in your letter to the zoning, you hit three to four foot by forty foot. It's going to be thirty?
Yeah, I, I just said thirty because that's what was in the...
Well, you got forty.
I know, forty, yeah.
So it's going to be forty or is it going to be thirty?
It's depending on how deep it needs to be for my boat to fit in there. I know I need at least three feet of water, and it's pretty shallow, so I would say thirty to forty feet.
How large is your boat?
That was my question.
Twenty foot.
Did you say twenty feet?
Nineteen foot, twenty feet. Nineteen foot without the swim platform, so twenty feet with it.
So it's not a canoe?
No.
Okay.
And it's not a kayak either.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of the application? Anyone here who wishes to speak in opposition to the application? Line up.
Line up.
Richard Howard, I live at three ninety-seven Bayfront Lane North. That's two properties to the north of that property. That, the property is on the small side, there is no principal use on the property. Access to the property would be through the sidewalk, which, like I said, we have a concern about bathroom, what are they going to do? Where are they going to store gas for the boat? There's no storage facility on the property, no storage facility is allowed on the property since they don't have a principal use. So that's my concern, is that there shouldn't be a variance given.
Okay, thank you. Next. No particular order here.
My name is Jane Schaaf, and I live at three sixty-one Bayfront Lane North, which is the next house south of her property. And my concern is land erosion. It's, because her has eroded quite a bit, the waters, waves have taken a lot of the land over. And we had a huge tree fall down about five years ago or somewhere in there, and it took out my fence. It fell half in the bay and half in my yard, and we had to take it out, take care of it at our expense, of course. And it did some damage to the, to that corner of my lot. It broke the footing and, you know, the decking, the docks. I don't have a dock. And the parking issue is not that great down there for any more cars. And like they say, bathroom privileges, there's no place to go.
Can I ask a question about the parking?
Well, it's, it's a...
Is everybody...
Kind of private parking.
Is everybody that owns, is everybody that lives down there, do they all get one or two spots, or how is it?
Each house gets two spots on the, what they call the inner lot.
Right, which is where the, where the sidewalk starts, right?
Right, no, no, it's, there used to be a house there years ago, but since then, it's been tore down.
So everybody gets...
We have assigned spots.
You have assigned spots? Everybody that owns property down there?
Yeah.
Everybody gets two?
Yeah, and if you choose that you only want one, then you park out beyond, beyond the mailboxes.
Because she owns a piece of property there, does she have a designated spot? And why is that?
I don't know.
I'm just...
She wouldn't have one on the inner lot.
I'm sorry?
She wouldn't have one on the inner lot because she doesn't have a home.
But she owns a piece of property there?
Yeah.
I'm the treasurer of the homeowners association, so I can speak to that?
Well, somebody can answer the question.
Whoever's going to speak to it needs to come up and be at the microphone so that it gets heard and seen and everything else. And you're, because you're being requested, that's why we're going to violate the you only get one shot at the microphone rule.
Yeah, so I'm the treasurer of the homeowners association. The homeowners association owns the inner portion of the lot. To be a member of the homeowners association, you have to have a residence on the property so that you can't have a property that doesn't have a resident and, residence and be a member of the homeowners association that owns the parking area. In addition to the inner lot, the association also has the rights to that outer parking lot that's where the mailboxes is and extends out towards the entrance gate to the condos. We own the lease on that piece of property and is for the use of our guests and residents.
Okay.
Okay.
Did it ever come up in, are there more than one lot like this person's lot that is not buildable or usable? Is there any other lots down there like this?
I think that's the only, the only one that's like that, yes.
I mean, was it ever a consideration that this particular lot was ruled out for a parking spot? spot? And the reason for that?
Well, no, I think, well, I think it didn't, well, it was ruled out, but just the, when were the...
Does it meet the criteria?
The bylaws of the association were written back in the early 90s.
Let me just speak to that.
Sorry, sorry.
I can just speak to that issue quickly. Thomas San Filippo, 383 Bayfront Lane North. I own the property directly to the north of the applicant's subject property. So our association owns, was deeded the inner lot, and we have the lease for the outer lot. The covenants in our deed restrict the use of the inner lot to the residents of the corporation, asset and parties.
Okay, not to cut you out short, and I get that, and the other board members want me to move on a little bit on this. I guess I don't understand why there wasn't a parking spot allowed for a piece of property that is part of your neighborhood.
Because there's no residents there and the parking is so limited that the idea was that in order to be entitled to spots, you have to be able to join the association and live there. Because the parking is limited and is not always available for the people that do live there and their guests. So that's the limitation. That's the law of the bylaw, that's the law of our association, and that is the restriction in our lease. Because nobody that lives there wants transient people coming down, taking up spots that don't live there, and we have enough problems as it is.
Mrs. San Filippo?
Yes.
So you have a piece of property that is unique in that the property is owned by someone who doesn't live on your particular side, so you purposely excluded that property and that property owner from the use of that property because it's not like yours?
No.
Is that, so is...
One could say that a homeowners association is, the membership is members who own homes. Homeowners has to do with the residents, so I think that there, a lot of these issues about parking and homeowners association and what is legal and what isn't legal might be beyond the purview of this application. Just a thought.
And let me say this as well, nobody can restrict her pedestrian ingress and egress.
I was gonna ask if there are restrictive covenants in the deeds that relate to all those properties, including hers?
No, there are not.
None.
Nothing is by deed, there's an easement by necessity.
Okay.
And as a matter of fact, I'm fairly confident, I know mine does, the title insurance that I have that ensures the title to my property guarantees pedestrian ingress and egress only.
Okay.
Okay, so...
Be tough to guarantee any other kind.
And I'll speak to a few points later.
Okay.
I'm Robert France, I live at 359 Bayfront Lane. I'm the vice president in Neighbor Association, homeowners. I have a concern and an observation. My observation is the fact that this parcel in question has not been maintained, it's not been kept, there's been no respect or concern for our neighbors and our values. And now all of a sudden they have some use for their property, which I guess is valid from that standpoint. But again, I own some property around Monroe County. When I have a vacant land parcel next to my neighbors, I must maintain it for respect of my neighbors. This is not being done down there. That's my observation. My concern is the fact that, first of all, not everyone has two spots in the inner lot. There isn't enough parking spaces right now. So some of our residents who belong there have spots in the outer lot, so it isn't that, as they says, our parking is at a premium. My concern is the fact that if she in fact has to access this lot, she's traveling more than probably a half a mile or so. And if you have a boat there, I'm assuming that you're gonna wanna be bringing down food, refreshments, et cetera. How is this person gonna be accessing a half a mile away, coming down Point Pleasant Road, coming down our sidewalk? If you have a recreational property, you're probably bringing guests to, where are all these people gonna be parking? They're not telling me that they're gonna be walking a half a mile with all these different guests themselves and bringing all these supplies down to their boat. And then in the off-season, they're gonna be storing that boat on the property? I don't know if that's completely fair with the rest of us down there that I have a boat and I don't store it on my own property, which I could, but I don't because of respect for my neighbors and how it would look. So that's pretty much my concerns and observations on what is taking place down there. And we, if you know the properties down there, which I'm sure the board does, we have substantial investments down there, some very substantial investments. And we would like the person who wants to be part of our community to show a little respect for what we have down there, and at this point they have not. So all of a sudden now we would like the cooperation of their neighbors to put up a dock. Well, again, those are my observations and my concerns. Any questions for me or to sum it up? Okay, thank you.
I have a question. If all of a sudden that you guys as a group, as an association, if she were to do upgrades to that lot and make it look more pleasing, aesthetically appealing, and keep it up better, would it be something that you consider?
Well, again, I'm going back to also the parking also. If she were to make it aesthetically pleasing, it's still the fact that, was what, any promises can be made so far? They've demonstrated they don't have the responsibility thus far. Because again, you own that property, you have an obligation to take care of it for your neighbors, whether you utilize it or not. And then also, I think she said that you paid an extra dollar for the property with the deed. Well, this can't be much of a major loss financially.
No, she said she paid a dollar amount for both properties. In other words, it wasn't separated out.
A lot of times they pay a dollar for it.
Well, the deed always says a dollar, but if you look at the revenue stamps and multiply by two per $500, you can find out what they paid for the property.
Okay. So again, I would say probably not because they haven't demonstrated the respect and concern for the neighbors. So then the promise is something going forward. I'm turning a kind of a duff ear to that only because of what they've demonstrated in the past. If they were really taking care of it down there and really making sure and helping us clear the sidewalk in the wintertime and helping to maintain it, because their property's down there too. None of that has taken place, none of that has happened. We as homeowners, we pay for that, we pitch in for that. We don't see that being done maintaining. I mean, if they come down, I'm shoveling my sidewalk so she can get by to her property. She should be shoveling her sidewalk so the rest of us can get by to the next property. That's not happening. So again, take those into consideration.
Clearing the sidewalks and that's not part of the association fees? Do you guys do that individually?
No, correct. Now, we have some, we have some that we, what we do, sometimes we will pitch in to have somebody take care of some of it, but our responsibility, like being in the city of Rochester, I have investment property there. They want me up until three and four inches, I maintain that sidewalk. And that's the way we do as good neighbors to make sure that each of us can safely pass to the next person's property. So that's one of our, another one of our issues and concerns.
Thank you, sir. Next.
Albert Ranieri, I live at 351 Bayfront Lane, and I have the same concerns basically with the no facilities on the property, no house, no power. I just don't understand how they can possibly have a dock there. That's my concern.
Okay, thank you.
Thomas San Filippo, 383 Bayfront Lane North, and I hope I'm not too repetitive. But before I get into the specifics of the application, let me just say this, any use variance, should it be granted? It doesn't just affect this one owner.
It probably is with the land.
There's gonna be other owners.
We understand.
The property is gonna transfer. And you have a situation here where you don't have a residence on the property and...
I'm gathering that this property is already transferred. I don't believe that the current owner was...
It's transferred three times.
Okay.
Okay, and so, again, it's not just about, it's nothing personal about this applicant. It's about the future. And what we've seen happens when there's a situation like this where an owner is not a resident down there. I think it's human nature that people don't have the same respect for each other when they don't have the same responsibilities towards each other. When you don't own the home, you're more transient and you're less likely to be considerate of your neighbors. That being said, let me say this. Those lots are separate, non-contiguous lots. The house on Ravine has nothing to do with the house on Bayfront Lane North. They're separate tax account numbers, they have separate assessments, and they have separate fair market values. The fact that one person owns both of those lots has no bearing on this application for a variance. It's no different than if somebody owned the Bayfront property and owned a piece of property in Pittsburgh. They're non-contiguous. They don't have anything to do with each other. They just happen to have been bought by the same person as the previous owner did. The owner before, the owner before her grantor, the applicant's grantor, bought that property after he bought Ravine Avenue, bought the lot after he bought Ravine Avenue. So this applicant knew or should have known what the zoning laws of the town of Arundacoit were when she bought these properties. She was charged with that knowledge, so it's a self-created situation. It's not something that came out of the blue. She should have known about this. She cannot, she can't just fabricate these lots into being together in order to make the primary use on Ravine Avenue the use on Bayfront Lane North.
I mean, in fairness to the applicant, I don't think she's fabricating things. I think that she, having purchased the property together, may have been under mistaken belief that somehow they were tied together. And that belief may even have been represented to her by the previous owner when the property was sold. But I understand your point, but I don't want to get into whether she's fabricating or whatever. It's, I understand your point.
I don't mean to cast any aspersions, Mr. Chairman.
Right, I just wanted to be clear about that, that's all.
On the other hand, it may very well be that she was well aware of the situation when she bought the property.
We don't know.
I'm just saying that it really has no bearing on her situation.
The only question I have is, she did buy a piece of property separately or together with the other property that she can't use.
Nobody's saying she can't use it.
Well, I mean, can't thoroughly take advantage of water, other than going there and setting up a folding chair and sitting there and watching the water. I mean, she's, you know, she's limited to the use of that lot.
That's true.
No matter what she paid for.
That's true, and that's unfortunate. And God knows I've made some investments that I didn't think were the best investments. However, as one of the previous speakers said, we all have substantial investments in these properties, and what about our property values? What about our privacy? Now, there's no residence there. When she comes home from, when she comes in on her boat at midnight, she's literally inside my house. She's 10 feet away from my lot lines, running a boat, people getting off the boat, people partying. They have no residence to go into. My first contact with this applicant was going, was having to go outside and ask her at midnight on a Thursday night to put out a fire that she was burning next to my house, a recreational fire that was filling my house with smoke. Now, I'm not saying that that kind of behavior is gonna continue always, but I'm saying that this is why that ordinance exists. The town code and the Bay Harbor Management Plan mandates a principal use if you want to have a dock, which is an accessory structure. It mandates it, and this is one of the reasons why. This isn't a cottage industry down here. This isn't a vacation land. It's a residential neighborhood. We get up every morning and go to work.
How was it that this lot ended up being separated from all the other lots and just a little island unto itself in the...
It's not an island unto itself. Those were all individual lots, and they were all purchased. They were all purchased, and Mr. Chairman, to say that you can't build, the only way that that lot will ever have a principal use is if you build a house on it. Now, when I built my house down there, I had to go hire a site engineer, plunked down $5,000. I had, I didn't meet variance.
Remember when you were building your house?
I didn't meet, I didn't meet any of the variances. When I bought my private, I didn't know if I was gonna meet, if I was gonna be granted by building permits. I plunked down the money for a site engineer. I plunked down the money for an architect. I plunked down the money for a foundation engineer. So I spent thousands and thousands of dollars before I came before the town and I said, may I have my building permits? And then under certain, under certain conditions, and after having the engineer present my case to the board, the variances were granted. Not a use variance, but the area variances were granted. And then, after I built my house, I was allowed to join the association, which she would be able to do. She could then plunk down her $5,000 to join the association, she could pay the yearly assessments, and she could contribute to our community.
Were all the lots 30 by 90?
Pretty much.
See them now, there's some that are clearly not 30 by 90.
And they were joined. Some of them were bigger, some of them were joined. But none of them met the area variances.
Right.
Okay, so that's not a given.
There's very few properties on the bay that do.
That's a chance you have to take when you come before the town and ask for your building permit. And once you've done that, you've got a substantial investment in your property, and you want to make sure that everybody in your community then is of like mind, where you're protecting your property values. Now, there's, I've got no figures for you, just like the applicant has no figures for you, but I don't believe that my property is going to be benefited by a removable dock and people, transient people coming up and down the sidewalk using a removable dock, and then I've gotta look at a removable dock out of my dining room window. So I think what the board has to remember too, but we'd like the board to remember respectfully, is that we have the right to rely upon the town code. We relied on the town code. I relied on the town code when I invested hundreds of thousands of dollars to build my house, that there was not gonna be another dock next to me. I wasn't gonna, because it...
At least not without a house.
Not without a house. And if there was a house built there, whoever was gonna make that investment would enhance the value of my property because you'd be making such a substantial investment and taking such a chunk out of your life to do that, that you'd want it to be done right. We have, when I built my house, I had to go and get permission from every property owner down there to cross the property with the materials and bring them in all the way from the outer, they let me store everything in the outer lot and bring it in for what I needed that day, each day. And that's what I did for out of respect for my neighbors. So I don't know about this lot being unique. I don't think it's unique. It's a lot like any other lot down there, but I think our community is unique. And I think that respect has to be paid to our community in that manner. I'd like to speak to you too, a little bit about whether or not this dock fits in with the character of our neighborhood. It doesn't. You don't define a neighborhood by accessory structures. You define it by the homes. Every dock down there has a principal residence. This would be one that doesn't. And that has its own problems that we've spoken to. I'd like to talk to you a little bit about the navigation law because it strikes me. It seems, from what I've read, that the authority that the town has to regulate docks stems from the navigation law. Under the navigation law, the town has the authority to regulate docks. And you can't put a dock in unless it does not in any way impede with the free and easy access from any other property owner to their dock or to the water or to their property. And a dock that's placed 10 feet away from my lot line, when it has a boat tethered to it, is gonna be in front of my break wall. It's gonna float out in front of my break wall. And I've gone through this before with the previous owner, who had a mooring buoy out there, and he couldn't keep the boat out from in front of my break wall, and it impeded my access to my dock and to my property. So if anything, the lot may be buildable, but it may not be wide enough to have a dock without impeding access to my property and without impeding access to my... have a dock without impeding access to my property and without impeding access to my neighbor to the, to the property and my neighbor to the south. She's got a 21-foot boat that's got at least an eight-to-nine-foot beam, and who knows what the next owner is going to, kind of what the next owner's gonna have? A 34-foot Sea Ray that's 15 feet wide is gonna interfere with my property. So, I, I'd appreciate the board thinking about the future and what that means to all of us as well in regards to this area variance, or in regards to the use variance. So, again, we're talking about, there's no parking out there. She's gonna have to come all the way down from Ravine, walk all the way down. There's no sanitary, there's no water, there's no electricity, there's no storage, and then we've got all the noise. So, not to beat a ho-, horse to death.
You're coming close.
Okay. I wanna make sure it's a candidate for the glue factory.
Ah, well.
You know, it's, it's, uh-
We don't have time limits, but-
It's, it's unfortunate that everybody wants the application denied. It's, it's an, it is an unfortunate situation, but we have to do what we feel is right for our families and our investments and our property.
That's why we have public input.
I appreciate your consideration.
The only thing I wanna make, the only thing I wanna make clear is that the, uh, I mean, there were comments that were made about, you know, respecting neighbors and things like that, and while those are important, uh, uh, things for neighborhood tranquility, they are not part of the factors that we have to consider in rendering use variances. We have to determine on whether or not there's a reasonable rate of return that can be realized under the existing ordinance, uh, whether it's a self-created hardship. We have to consider its impact upon the, the neighborhood, whether that would be detrimental or not, but whether it's, it's not up to a vote of the neighbors.
I understand, Mr. Chairman, and that, and that respect also, I think that if you're gonna use a reasonable rate of return, you have to, you look at a reasonable rate of return for a vacant lot and a reasonable rate of return for a house on Ravine Avenue. The two can't be combined.
I, I understand.
Thank you very much.
That's why we've asked her to get us, or why I brought it up. We need dollars and cents information that we presently don't have. But, thank you, sir.
Appreciate the board's consideration.
I don't see anyone else standing up, so I'm assuming that there's nobody else that wishes to speak in opposition to the application. Was there somebody who wanted to talk about properties on the bay and sidewalks and easements and rights of way or navigation law or anything else like that? All right. Does the applicant wish to respond?
I guess, I don't know. Yeah, I will. I do not intend on parking in their parking spaces. I do not intend on bringing crowds of people, um, to this property. I am using it. I, I'm a nurse. I work in the emergency department. I-
Do you understand-
I'm a person of character. I really think I am.
Do you understand what we're talking about in terms of dollars and cents proof?
Yes.
All right. So, you're going to come back at a later date, and you're gonna have that for us, and you're gonna work on getting it, right? And so, you're consenting to us adjourning your application, right? For that purpose?
Mm-hmm.
And I'll explain to you so that people understand this. If you consent to the adjournment, then the time stops running that we have to take action. And if we don't take action within a certain time, the law says that we are deemed to have done something, and quite honestly, I can't remember right now whether it's granted or deny it. But, if we deny it, you can't reapply for a year-
Okay.
... or more. So, by consenting to the adjournment, that clock's not running-
Okay.
... for you or against you, for us or against us. And it gives you the time that you need to look at, you need to look at the requirements, and the folks in the office will help you. There's five requirements for a use variance. They'll tell you what they are, and then you can go about getting what we need in order to evaluate it. If we don't have in front of us what we need and you don't consent to an adjournment-
Okay.
... you probably will run into a denial-
Right.
... because we don't have what we need. And then, that would inhibit you from reapplying or work, trying to work something else out. So, you're consenting to that adjournment.
I consent.
Okay. All right. And with that, we'll close the hearing with respect to this matter.
Can I ask a question?
A question? Okay. That's our fourth category now. Question?
Okay. I can wait if you have a question.
No, because we're about to adjourn, so, or take our recess.
First, my name's Jackie Howitt. I'm at 397 Bayfront, and I'm, uh, mine is a question of order. Are we allowed to object to it being tabled? Those who object to this case.
No, because you don't have, we decide how we're going to handle our applications. It's not up to people who are interested. We have any other cases on our agenda for this evening?
Sorry, Mr. Chair, I believe we have a tabled item for 260 Daly Boulevard.
Is there a motion to bring case number ZB1603-5 off the table and place it on the agenda for this evening?
So moved.
Second.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions, and we are all present.
And the ta-
Hold on.
Let me read it?
Yep.
Sorry. Case number ZB1603-5, upon the matter of request by-
Shayna.
Shayna?
Shayna.
Shayna, excuse me. Cap, Capaluno?
Capalupo.
Capalupo, sorry, excuse me. For a special use permit to harbor three ducks and two hens with coop pursuant to Section 23570 of Town Code on premises 260 Daly Boulevard in our one residential district.
And somewhere here with our packet, there was a letter that we'd received that I think we'd asked you to get for us a while ago when you were here, that said that the rodent problem appears to have been, uh, abated. You've-
Yes.
-taught them all a lesson that the rest of them have learned? There it is. And that's from, uh, the person that you, uh, consulted with who assisted you in deterring their presence, right?
Yes.
All right. And is there anything else that you wish to add, uh, to the presentation that you made to us when this matter first appeared on our, uh, agenda, which would have been in March?
Yes. Um, I just wanted to say thank you again for having me. I'm sorry that I missed the last meeting. Um, I am very much like my pets, and I very much like being good neighbors, so I hope that this satisfied what you asked of me last time.
Any members of the board have any questions or comments? So, are we rodent-free, pest-free?
According to the weather we are.
Yep, I saw that, but-
I'm assuming the neighbor who supported your application, who was the one who was impacted the most by the rodents, is happy?
Yes.
They got a copy of this.
How long they suggest to maintain the, this poison and stuff, whatever they're using?
Uh, we're going to keep doing it preventatively right now. It doesn't make sense to not do it.
And the dogs and other non-un desirable animals are okay?
Yes.
All right. Any other questions or comments from the board? Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to this application? Is there anyone who would like to talk to us about the topic of this application? Chickens, ducks? Anyone who has any questions? Then we'll adjourn. We'll-
Thank you.
... finish this case, and we will take a recess to about 10 after 9:00.
Did you make the phone call?
I did make the call. While we're waiting, let me see, run down through the agenda and see who we have present. Just say here, yo, whatever. 128 Paxton Road.
Here.
Okay. 405 Crossfield Road.
Here.
115 Birch Hills Drive.
Here.
So far, we've got 100% attendance. 36 Parkside Crescent.
Here.
37 Somerville Drive. 375 Bayfront Lane North. Not here. And 260 Daly Boulevard. All right, then. This has rarely happened that we have, we're actually going to go down through the agenda in order, for the most part. So, the first application for us to consider is 128 Paxton Road. This is a type-two action for secret purposes. And does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application? This is the fence on the west side of the house on Paxton Road.
All righty, I'll do 128 Paxton Road. I'd like to say that we'll approve this. I don't believe it's a substantial variance. I don't believe it'll affect the environment. I don't think it's going to change the character of the neighborhood. I do want to make a suggestion, and we did talk about it with the applicant, that the top of the fence, either the top one foot or possibly two foot of the fence could be done in a lattice-style fence, at least from the front corner of the house to the back corner of the house, the two portions of the fence.
Do you want to make that a condition of the variance?
I do want to make that a condition of the variance. And I think it was acceptable by the gentleman. And it is a self-created issue because they want a fence, but they want to block off some of the lighting that's coming around the turn at the street, across the street from them. Let's see, I hit all the environment. So based on that criteria, I'd say we accept it.
I second the motion.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I'm, I would just make the comment before we vote that unlike some of the other applications this evening, this one really does not, is not based on anything unique to the structure of the property, where the residents are located, anything like that. And I heard the applicant make a comment that it fit with his idea of privacy. And it seems to me that this application is more subjective than objective in terms of the actual property itself. So my vote is going to reflect those comments.
Yep. Any other discussion or comments from the board? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
And any abstentions? So the motion carries, five votes in favor, two opposed, no abstentions, we are all present. Next application is 405 Crossfield Road. This is also a type-two action for secret purposes. Does anyone wish to make an application?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion.
Motion with respect to this application.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the application and grant the variance as applied for, based on the following findings. The, because of the unique location of the prop, of the residence on this property set so far back behind the rear foundation line of the two adjoining parcels, that this is a unique situation, that there is no other means that would be feasible for them to have privacy on the one side to match the fence on the other side. So there really is no other feasible means for them to achieve the privacy they're looking for. It will not be an undesirable change in the neighborhood because the property, the house is set so far back, it's going to mirror the fences that are already in place on, I believe, the north side of the property. The request is not substantial. Again, it's going to just be what would be permissible from the two neighbors, only this property owner's going to do it. There will be no adverse impact on the environment. And the location of the house is certainly not self-created. So on those grounds, I would move that we grant the variance.
I'll second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions, and we are all present. Next application pertains to 115 Birch Hills Drive. Does anyone wish to make, this is a type-two action for secret purposes, does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we approve this application for the, to allow for the four hens that he's asking for, based on the following findings. Because of the uniqueness of the neighborhood, this will not represent any change to the neighborhood at all. It's not a huge request, it's certainly something that's been in place for a while, not that that justifies it, but it's that, it's not a real big one. There'll be no negative effect on the physical and environmental conditions, because we're talking about a chicken coop here and four hens. Is it self-created? Yes, it is, because people make up their own minds whether they want to have chickens or not.
Well, this is a special use permit, application as opposed to a variance, so that's the question of self-created, the question, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the standard for the special use permit, there's already been a determination that it's not inconsistent with the character of the neighborhood, it's what conditions, if any, we need to impose in order to make it as compatible as possible.
That's correct. So the self-created hardship factor is not a consideration.
Okay, so which brings me to my next point, actually, and that is, conditions. And I think the same conditions would apply to this application as they have on others in the past, whereby a certified veterinarian would need to do a yearly inspection of the hens and certify that they're in good health, that there'd be no roosters as part of this.
Five-year term?
Yeah, the five-year term, that's every, once every five years, to be revisited by this board to review the application for the chickens.
And a limit of four.
And a limit of four hens. I really had this well thought out, you know?
I know you did. Then I threw you off track. Sorry about that.
If Mr. Thomas is on, I'd like to second that motion with the additional finding that the applicant has submitted a large amount of evidence to show that the structure itself is sound, and that the applicant is well able to maintain these hens without any impact on the community.
Any other discussion?
Jim, were we going to have the town go visit like we were doing before?
Well, we'd asked, in the other instances where we've asked the town to go to it after a year, it's when they've putting up a coop, and we wanted to see how it had worked out. This one's been there, so I don't see a need for the town to go a year.
This one's a little unique that if one dies, because there's only two right now, how that's going to affect.
He can have, he can have up to four, but he's had four. And given the fact that he borders up to the park and doesn't have any, the neighbor, there's quite a distance between both of the houses, the neighbors didn't even know for years that they were there. I'm not as concerned about having the town go out in a year, but if the board feels that that's something that would be appropriate, we can certainly add that.
You'll keep it consistent with all the other requests.
All right. So we'll ask the town to, town to inspect in one year, and put inspect and report. And I think, just for your information, I think we designated June as our hen reporting month.
June, August.
June, August in there, yeah. Here we go. All right. Any other comments or discussion from the board? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Say aye.
Any abstentions? Motion carries, six votes in favor, one opposed, no abstentions, we all continue to be present. Next application pertains to 36 Parkside Crescent. This is a, this is a type-two action for secret purposes. Does anyone wish to make an app, a motion with respect to this application?
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we grant the variance as applied for, for 36 Parkside Crescent, to allow the garage to be converted on paper to a shed. And I would do it on the following findings. First, the request is very small, it's a minor request of a variance of 23 square feet, that will have no adverse impact on the environment or on the nature of the community. By removing the driveway and the garage slash shed being so far back, it won't be, will really be visible from the street. The location of the garage and the fact that cars are getting larger is not really self-created. And I believe that there really is no reasonable alternative to using the structure that exists that cannot be used for a garage without demolishing it, so I think we should grant it. However, whoever wants to second, and that's my motion, if someone wants to second it to include the requirement that they remove the garage doors and replace them with something that does not look like a regular garage door, the applicant has said that he would entertain that, I'm not going to put it on my motion, but if someone wants to add it to the second, I will support it.
I'll second it, but I don't find it necessary that we change the door. If you'd like to, that's up to you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I would recommend that the board consider a condition stating that motor vehicles not be stored in the converted shed, because by virtue of the definition of garage under the code, that relates to the storage of motor vehicles, and it could potentially trigger a need for an additional variance if a motor vehicle is stored in this garage, because there's a maximum 900 square feet allowed in this district of garage space.
The question I have, and because a lot of sheds do store motorcycles, and I believe he's got his stored in there, I wouldn't want to limit him to not be able to store the motorcycle. And again, a lot of sheds are used to store motorcycles or snowmobiles for that matter. So I don't know that we need to make, make it a condition, maybe not store automobiles?
Yeah, I think that would get closer to where the town needs to be. I just, the reason I state that is because the code says in this district you can have 900 square feet of garage space, and I believe the new garage he's proposing is about 830 square feet, so in the aggregate, he would be above that 900 square foot threshold.
If we were to put the condition on that it be used as a shed, as defined under the code, would that be sufficient? That would be sufficient, yeah. All right. Well, then I would add that condition to my original motion.
So for use as a shed as defined under the zoning ordinance.
So it can be used.
Well, my question is, is he going to get in trouble if he's got his motorcycle in there? Or nobody's going to care?
That would be a determination that would be made by someone in the town.
Okay. I'll leave him alone.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. I would also note that if you take the shed that you're allowed to have and the garage that you're allowed to have, he's still about 50 feet under the allowed total square footage that would be allowed. Next application is 37 Somerville Drive. This is a type-two action for secret purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application? I'll make a motion, then, that we grant the variance on the condition that the fence is to be located entirely within the applicant's property. And I would, a minute, I write slow. Have to write the condition down. And in support of the application, I would propose the following findings that will not create any change in the character of the neighborhood, they're really, the homeowner has tried other, property owners tried other alternatives that don't require a variance through naturally growing things that have not been successful. It's not a substantial request, it's not going to have a detrimental effect on the physical or environmental conditions if it's granted, it's not a self-created situation, it's largely due to the juxtaposition of the prop, the structures on the various adjoining properties, and with the condition that the fence is located wholly within and entirely within the applicant's property, it will ensure that it doesn't create any other potential problems in the neighborhood.
Second.
I have a question with regard to entirely on the applicant's property. Mr. Brenner, correct me if I'm wrong, but they are able to install that fence on the property line?
Right, but not over the property.
But not over the property line, so.
Install it on the property line. I mean, so during the discussions, I mean, the recommendation, I think from the town, as was acknowledged by the applicant, would be to set back that fence slightly from where he believes that lot line is, but the chairman had a good recommendation that someone should go back out there and stake it before the fence is installed.
Okay, okay. Just wanted a clarification.
Any other discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions, we all continue to be present. The next application before us with an applicant present is 260 Daly Boulevard. This is also, I believe, a type-two action for secret purposes. And does anyone wish to make an application, or a motion with respect to this application?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve this application. It's a use variance.
A special use permit.
Special use permit. Can't seem to get my terminology right tonight, but it's, it's what it is. So I was impressed with the fact that she took the steps necessary to, to clean up the area, to ensure that the rodent problem is under control. And I'm trying to figure out a way to, to put a condition on this so that, because rodents come back, you know, I mean, can we?
This is an application that we had previously granted to the previous homeowner. And then she added, I think, she had ducks, she had, there was something.
We allowed ducks or geese, but not chickens, and this applicant wants chickens.
Chickens as well as ducks. I think there's still ducks there.
It's three ducks and two hens.
Two hens.
So if it's not an issue, then I don't, I'm not going to worry about it, but.
Well, I, I think she said that they were going to be maintaining, and I would suggest that we grant it on the same conditions that we did in the past, which is, and with the others, that there be no more than four hens, and, well, there's now three ducks there, so we're already at five. So no more than two hens and three ducks, no more than four feathered creatures there other than the present ones, and that it be subject to the annual veterinarian inspection.
Inspection, right.
That it be subject to the inspection by the town in a year with a report, and that it be valid for a period of five years.
Well, the, okay, I'm on, that's fine.
I think those are the conditions.
Same as those are the other conditions. However, you said there are three ducks.
Three ducks, three ducks.
Three ducks.
So that means five feathered creatures.
Five.
But when one of them is no longer among us.
Yes.
It won't be replaced.
So the maximum?
Maximum will be four, aside from the current occupants.
Okay.
Grandfather and one of them.
One of them's, yeah.
Did you call that duck a grandfather?
That's the motion.
I'll second that. I'll second that. Any discussion?
I'll just make a couple comments for the benefit of our TV audience. This one's troubling because first, there are rats. And just because a rat's not there today doesn't mean a rat can't be there tomorrow. And I think that supports Bob's concerns, Mr. Hammond's concerns, that these are not necessarily clean. Second is, I believe these chickens were obtained before coming to the board. So this is the second application, I think, that we're entertaining this evening, where they're asking for permission after the fact. And just because we might grant these doesn't mean that we will in every instance.
Any other discussion or comments by the board?
Well, one thing would be the condition of the, of the rats. Is there a way to make it a condition? If the rats do come back, that we take away the permit?
Well, we-
Because if it's, if it ends up being, my concern is, if it ends up being a habitual rat issue, where they, where they come back every year, and then you have to have them taken away, or have to call the exterminator, if it's, it's one of the few that we've had the rat problem, but you don't want to continually keep fighting it. So if it becomes a problem, where they come back, then maybe this one should be revoked.
Well, we put in the inspect and report within a year. Do we want to, we could insert a condition about that the owner is responsible for rodent control? Would that be acceptable?
But again, if they do return, do we want to-
I think that's the purpose of the report, inspect and report, is to get information like that.
And the owner already agreed to have continual maintenance of the pest control problem. So for me, I think that satisfies the recommendation.
So then if at the inspect and report, there are rats, would there be a mechanism for us to revoke the permit? I believe that might be something we're trying to get at.
How about if we say, subject to review and possible revocation?
See, my hope is that they're not going to come back, but if they do-
If inspection not satisfactory? What, the one thing that I found particularly unique, I guess, is that the neighbor who's most affected by the rodents has spoken favor of the applicant.
They're good neighbors.
Yes. And I thought that was telling of the spirit of cooperation that exists in the neighborhood. Any other discussions, comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Who was the second? Any abstentions? Motion carries, five votes in favor, two votes opposed, no abstentions. We all continue to be present. The last application on the agenda this evening is 375 Bayfront Lane North. This is an unlisted action, I believe.
Correct.
And I'm going to make a motion that we table the application with the consent of the applicant to see if she can provide us with the dollars and cents proof that a use variance requires. And I would also, as a condition of tabling, that if the, if the dollars and cents information that we need is not available by the July meeting, that it be returned to the agenda for decision.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions, and we all continue to be present. We have two more items to address before we adjourn for the evening. The first is, I'd like to welcome Lauren Kelly, who's the new Director of Development in the town. Mr. McCann, who was the previous Director of Development, is now working at the county clerk's office and with somebody else that we used to know. And, and the last item on the agenda is the minutes of the March 7th meeting that were distributed with all of our packets, with all the applications. Did everyone have an opportunity to review the minutes?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that we accept them.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. We continue to all be present, and we are adjourned.